Okay, it's my clock, we'll get started. I call the Board of Oregon for Monday, December 2nd, 2024. Just remind you trustees to speak into the mics, please. Ash, call the roll, please.
Fashin?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Manki?
Here.
Kurt Strucker?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Manki?
Here. Thank you. Item 3, approval from November 18th, 2024, village board meetings are correct, and corrections and mistakes. Tom and Tim. Questions, comments? Any none, or all those in favor in the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item 4, public comparisons, comments, communications. Public comment is part of the agenda. Allows member in the public to provide information for the village board, including on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item, three minutes maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Public comments? See none? Thank you. Item 5, approval of vouchers in the amount of $944,877.45. Motion to approve as presented. Carleen and Jason. Questions, comments?
I did have one question.
Please.
So the J.C. pickleball fence repair, is there a good story behind that?
Elisa Leanne, do you know the story?
Elisa, was that related to the wind?
I believe so.
Yeah, one of the worst stories we had earlier. So probably depends what your definition of a good story is.
That's just my imagination.
Yeah. Darn.
Anybody else?
I have a question on page 12. Von Briesen and Roper, labor and personnel. I should probably know what this is, but I don't. So could someone enlighten me?
That is our labor attorney.
Got it.
Anyone else? Okay, we're motion Carleen, second by Jason. Roll call, please.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kurt Strucker?
Yes.
Fashin?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 6, consent agenda. Items A through F, with a confirmed motion to approve. Amanda and Tim. Questions, comments on any of these items? Or staff number comment? Any none, or all those in favor in the cap saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 7, reporting committees under for discussion and/or possible action. A1, Park Board Resolution Number 24 has 37 naming lots dedicated to the public for park purposes in the Greenview Preserve, Platte Stoddard Park, Outlet 9, and Savannah Park, Outlet 11. Staff reclamation and Park Board. Motion to approve as presented. The motion, please. Everybody and Amanda and Tom. And is there further explanation? Questions? Think for the Park Board? Nothing? Okay, well, easy enough. We have a motion by Amanda and Tom. All those in favor in the cap by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Boy, the mics are really working well. Item 8, unfinished business. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A presentation of community survey report from community perceptions regarding a possible referendum to exceed property tax levy limit in village board review. And Scott Gerard is here to...
Good evening. Is this mic working? It sounds like it.
Are you plugging in a presentation? Or can we just, can we go through it for you?
Oh, sure. You can go through it for me. Sorry.
It's a PDF.
Your other tab. Oh, I see. That's what happens when you're on the spot. Yes, it is.
All right. Well, thank you all for having me back tonight. It's good to see you all again. I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving. I am here to present the results of your community survey. If you can go to page 2. So a little key for the types of information we'll see tonight. That blue post-it note is background information. That'll look very familiar. It's what was on the survey itself. We'll have survey and responded information about who took your survey, the results and analysis, and then at the end, time for wrap-up and questions. Little reminder about us. We've helped more than 1,000 communities navigate strategic planning and referendum planning since 2002. Now on to the fun stuff of your survey. So there was a November 11th deadline, so we're about three weeks out from that. We have 1,112 respondents for a 23% response rate, which is fantastic. We're really happy to get over 20%. I would say our average is in the mid to upper teens. And so seeing this shows that your community was really interested, both in learning what it is you're considering, and giving you that feedback. That the number of respondents does come with a plus or minus 3% statistical margin of error. That's just a function of how many respondents you have. So nothing, error is always a weird word to use, but no one did anything wrong, just based on the number of respondents there. As far as the age of respondents, as you can see, the largest portion was from the 65-plus community. This is something we see pretty often and we're pretty happy to see. They're a reliable voting block. They're going to turn out at the polls in almost every election. So it's really important to hear from them on these surveys as you're considering what your community might be willing to support. Solid participation from the other age groups. That 18 to 24 age group, I think in my, over the 50-plus surveys I've done here, I think I've seen that be more than 1 or 2%, maybe once or twice. So that's not a surprise there. But we're pretty happy with those numbers overall for what our normal survey distributions look like. Is your primary residence in the village? Of course, we need to know, so we know whether folks will actually be voting in the election. 99% of your respondents said yes. That 0.6% that said no, and the 0.4% that said not sure, likely maybe a staff member or two, a few folks maybe right on the borders, you know, with a neighboring town who maybe got it or weren't sure which municipality they're actually in. Renter and homeowner, vast majority of survey respondents are homeowners with 93%. Again, not a surprise, I think, as we talked about a little bit when I was here getting the survey approval. The implications for a homeowner are just more direct financially, those taxes. And so we do tend to see a lot stronger response from homeowners than renters. And finally, how do you like to receive village information? Your newsletters and website, both strong responses. The Oregon Observer, emails, and Facebook, all with a quarter or more. Folks like to use those to receive village information. Now on to what was in the survey. So here we have the base plan. Little reminder of what was included in that base plan, which was a couple of the options from that options assessment that you all reviewed. And then on the next page, we've got, we asked, would you support the $2.3 million referendum to pay for the base plan? Between the definitely yes and probably yes responses, we have 50%. 10% are undecided, and 40% said probably or definitely no. On the additional funding for short-term projects, a reminder of what was outlined and included in that project. And then to the same question with a different amount, would you support the $3.9 million referendum to pay for short-term funding needs? We had 30% definitely or probably yes, 13% undecided, and 57% definitely or probably no. And finally, the additional funding long-term, reminder of what was included there. And the support levels, when we asked for the support, if folks would support it, we had 15% saying definitely or probably yes, 13% undecided, and 72% definitely or probably no. We did also ask about other funding sources related to the wheel tax and streetlight charge, and whether folks would be open to an additional $471,000 on a referendum to replace those funding sources. What we see here is 42% saying definitely or probably yes, 14% undecided, and 44% definitely or probably no. So slightly leaning toward the noes there. And then on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the village to a friend or family member? Oregon's score was a 7.00, which is great to see. We really look at those top three or four as sort of ambassadors, folks who are going to talk about you and say how great it is to be here, whether someone brings it up or not. They're just going to tell a friend who lives in the neighboring community how much they like Oregon. And so it's really great to see, you know, just within those top three, you're above 50%. So that's very good news, I would say. And that is the end of the results and presentation, and I'd be happy to take questions. It's a lot of data and information to take in.
Please.
I have a couple of questions. So as I was going through the three plans and the percentages, I'm noticing that the undecided number is staying pretty consistent. I think it was like 10, 13, and 13. Do you, as someone who analyzes these results a lot, do you assume that that's the same respondent saying undecided?
Generally, it is. I could actually disaggregate the data to confirm that.
Okay.
Generally, it is, though, when we have done those disaggregation. You're not, and if they move, you might get someone who said yes in the first question moves to undecided in the second question. And that's why, you know, that 10 grows to 13, and other folks maybe move from undecided to no. But generally, yeah, it tends to say pretty sad no.
And in your opinion, is that a pretty consistent number of people who are sort of neutral on these things?
I would say anywhere from 10 to 20% is what we often see undecided. And just for your information, what we've been seeing trending lately is fewer of those people moving to yes. It used to be, five, six years ago, we saw more people, a little bit of a split, maybe a third of the undecideds would move to yes. That has dropped, and it's less reliable now that you'll get a proportion moving to yes.
Great. That's great.
There's a lot of factors that can contribute to that, but...
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, like, why would they have answered the survey if they were undecided? I mean, I don't understand.
Yeah, well, it wasn't an option on there. They may have started filling it out and got to the question and said, boy, I really don't know, but I'm already 10 minutes into this, I might as well get my feedback. Again, I think it's likely that some of those folks who said yes to the first one were undecided on the later questions. And so that doesn't mean they were undecided on everything on the survey. Maybe someone had thoughts on the additional funding sources and wanted to answer that, but was undecided on the other three, you know? So there's lots of reasons, but yeah, we do get 10 to 20% often on those types of questions that are in that undecided bucket.
Thank you, Scott. Clearly, our results are showing that 50% at the base level. And what number would you say at a certain, at 40% or 38% would you say probably not a good time to do a referendum?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and it can depend on the tax impacts and the community, and you all know that best, as far as your community and their appetite. I think 50% is very much your community giving you permission to put something on the ballot. I will say, a lot of surveys we're doing are sub-50% or, you know, maybe 47 or 48, which is probably within the margin of error, but still on the wrong side of 50. You being at 50, I think, shows your community understands you have some needs that they're willing to consider paying for. That $2.3 million plan itself exactly is right at 50%, so it would be a bit, there's risk involved in going with that exact number. But I think the community is clearly giving you permission to pursue something.
And given that our support was 50% at the lowest level, if they were presented with an option of, say, $1.8 million, one could safely assume the number would probably go up.
If, you know, I could, I never like to assume in a data business, but I can't say that historically, as the cost goes down, support goes up.
Okay. Thank you. Jason?
So you've seen more, fewer people moving from undecided, nor more recently, have you seen educational pieces or actions boards have taken in the past that have helped people move from undecided to positive?
That's a really good question. I don't know that I have any specific examples, because I think so much of it depends on the community you're in and the issues you're communicating about. The best way to communicate about a new building is going to be different than the best way to communicate about needing additional funding for staffing, which is going to be a different way to communicate about needing additional funding to operate a facility separate from staffing. I think, I would suggest that that question about how do you like to receive village information can be really useful there in thinking about where to communicate with folks. I think we're also working on a comment analysis, because a lot of these either have open-ended questions or space for comments, questions and suggestions. So we're going to identify some of the themes that folks are thinking about or asking about, or narratives that are out there. And I think that's where it gets really unique, and you want to look at what those themes are for your community and communicate about those things. And so I don't, that's not totally a satisfying answer, but I think that hopefully that comment theme analysis will be pretty useful in figuring out how to communicate about the issues and what folks are thinking about as they're thinking about what was on the survey.
Right. Well, and that was going to be my next question, is if there was themes coming out of the comments, and you're working on that.
Yes, yeah, it's in process, so I'll be sending that over to Martin, hopefully later this week.
Tom?
Just one follow-up question on the last item was the, I think it was $441,000 for replace the streetlight and the vehicle wheel tax. If you combined that number in with that, say, the base plan, would you see that as decreasing the acceptability? I guess, sort of, because it was so neutral, it would seem to be negative to add that amount on to the top of a referendum request.
Yeah, I think, given that the 42% level of support for that, additional funding and replacement funding, because that's lower than 50%, I would assume that would take away support from the base plan itself.
Carleen?
Thanks. I have a couple of questions. First of all, did you see any drop-off in, you know, if people answered the first one, then they, like, that's what I'm good, was there a drop-off?
Nothing significant.
In the numbers of people who responded?
Pretty similar numbers. Let me see. I'll check if I can confirm exactly what that is, but it was pretty similar throughout in my recollection. Take me a few minutes. So if I want to ask you other questions?
Well, I guess it's not really a question. It's one more kind of comment. This morning on public radio in the morning show, they actually had someone on who was talking about, did you hear that as well?
I did.
And so was talking about municipalities going to referendum, and school districts going to referendum, and the need for that, and why that is. It was a very interesting discussion, first of all, and it's something that I think, in combination with folks like, this was a professor of municipal economics, who was the commentator, we should be able to, I would think, make the case for why we need to do this, because when we think about the services that people want, we know that we have to have the revenue somehow. But I, I'll say it again, I've said it a lot. We also need to make the case that the legislature needs to be responsive to municipal governments, and if we don't want to continue to have to do these kinds of things, our legislators need to be responsive to us as voters on the state level. Because, you know, people will point their fingers at us as trustees, and we are in this jam because we don't get what we need in shared revenue.
To answer the previous question, the base plan, everyone answered. We lost four people from the short-term and long-term funding, and then another four people to the other funding sources, so pretty stable.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Absolutely. And to answer the other question about the undecideds as well, I was able to just look at that. Among folks who answered undecided on the base plan, 39% were undecided on the short-term funding, and then about 56% moved to the no category. And then of those that answered undecided on the base plan, 27% were undecided on the long-term funding, and about 70% were in the no category.
Anybody else? Okay, so, Martin, do you have something else to add?
I think maybe only a couple of comments. I think the examples of the city of Pittsburgh and City of Monona going through this process just in November, and their results are very instructive for us. They went through the same process, they used Mueller Communications, Community Perceptions that we're going through. And interestingly, for the city of Pittsburgh, their survey, and Scott, I'm speaking out of line just correctly, but their survey indicated that the amount that they went for, which I think was about $3.5 or $3.6 million, they saw about 47% support, 48% accord in their community survey for that amount. And their city council felt like they could sell to get that additional 3, 5, 4%. It failed by the exact percentage, almost 53 to 47% as their survey. Now, the City of Monona is sort of a little bit different in the fact that they saw 60%, around 60, I think it was 58%. 59% support for the question, the amount that they ended up going for on their ballot, which was $3 million. Theirs just barely passed by like 50.3% of the vote, it was like 30 votes. So they lost almost 10% between their survey and the ballot. And from what it sounds like, there was maybe some extraneous things that happened in the intermediate months that maybe gave some bad PR or something of that nature. So that was out of the control, I think, of actually the city itself. So to me, I think those couple things are very instructive for us. Number one, I think we should look at that 50% of that base plan, and the negatives, plus or minus 3 is taking it for what it is and not assuming that we can sell this any more than what it is. And then also assuming that things can happen that are out of our control. And if we go in April over these next, you know, five months, that things may happen that maybe put the village in a bad light that we just can't control, and that may affect the outcome of a referendum. So I think, Phil had sort of mentioned it, a possible option here is, you know, is there an amount that we can decrease by, decrease to 2.3 by, that we feel comfortable with, both politically, operationally, from a resident standpoint, that we can all agree upon as maybe an option to move forward with?
So along that line, Martin, the memo kind of explains what our next steps look like and when we need to start making some decisions in order for things to be on the April ballot. So will we be able to see some additional suggestions or proposals around the 2.3 number in December, or will that be more of a January?
I think, I guess depending on what the board's preference is, I think we can have suggestion or recommendation for some changes by the next meeting, and we can evaluate that. And then I think, at this next meeting on 16th, the board should give staff direction to have the resolution prepared with probably the final choice, or maybe one of two, if you want to think about it, before the January 6th meeting. But I think we can prepare some options for the next meeting.
How many referendums can we have on the ballot? Can we do like the base referendum, and then can we do the wheel tax, or rule one, like that supplemental one as a separate referendum that may or may not pass?
You could, yeah.
May I feel like it's within the margin of error, that maybe we just put it on the actual ballot for people to vote on as a separate thing from the base?
Move, move it back.
I think it's an interesting idea. My gut says that the communication challenge on that would be pretty significant in getting people to understand that it's separate, and with the strong, I mean, stronger opinion on the survey around the additional piece, I would be worried that people would do, answer the same in both questions, as opposed to really considering the difference, and that maybe it would bring more no's to the question. But just a thought, yeah.
Tom?
I guess I'd also probably say that if you put it as two separate items, they would look at it, and they would say, oh, $2 million or $400,000, and they're going to vote for one or the other. They're probably not going to vote as likely, or, and it would just, it would, I guess, to me, it would, as I mentioned, I guess, the communications issue on what are we trying to ask for, and what are we trying to accomplish here, and so on.
Would you have an opinion on that, Scott, or rather not?
I think if you have two questions that are both operational funding related like this, I think to Tom's point there, that probably is the biggest risk, is that folks who maybe didn't receive communications or didn't read about it show up at the ballot and see a lower versus a higher number, and decide, well, I'll give them something, but not the biggest thing. And so that tends to be rational over behavior, I would say.
I guess I would say that, given that the replacement of the wheel tax and the streetlight tax gives us no real benefit financially, and it didn't have a lot of support, I don't see any point in pursuing that at all. You know, if people had overwhelmed and they supported that because they see it as a nuisance or a fee they don't like paying, and they'd rather have it in the property tax, they would have responded that way in the survey. But if they're kind of shrugging their shoulders at it, and there's no benefit, why would we even take the risk of confusing the issue or, you know, potentially creating strife over it? So I would just drop it. And never bring it up again.
Jason? I'm on the board.
Question for you, so if you paid much attention to the national news around the general election in November, talking heads, right or wrong, say, was a lot about the economy. Do you think that negatively impacted it for the City of Monona's, whereas we, versus we might be avoiding that in April?
It's hard to say, and as far as avoiding it in April, I think there's a lot, including administrations, that could affect how folks are feeling in April, so I don't necessarily want to speak to whether that will be more positive or negative. That is an example, I think a good example, of the factors that are somewhat outside of your control that could impact the outcome. And so you have to just focus on what you can control, I think would be the best advice
As Martin alluded... As Martin alluded to, and I've both same thinking, and that is, is that we want to pass a referendum, not necessarily 2.3 million. So I'm going to be open to the idea of potentially reducing the amount, going to the community and say, you know, we felt the need to make an adjustment. That's what I meant tonight. Martin has presented with those couple of options. That is, he would come back with a couple of options. Excuse me, is that the question you would like to take?
Yes.
Good buddy? Okay. Good, you got what you need? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item nine, new business items for discussion and or possible action. A resolution number 24-38 addressing the vacancy of a director of public works position, including temporary pay for staff and plant to evaluate the department's structure, personnel, and functions.
I have a memo and a resolution and a packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions related to it.
Tom?
I guess, given some of the prior discussions that we've had this evening, I guess I'm a little concerned that between now and March, we're going to be very focused and busy on some other things. And a reorganization and a redesign of departments seems something we might give a lot of consideration to and I'm working through. And I don't want to shorten by putting a timeline on it. That's too short. I guess I would also wonder, but the resolution reads no later than April. Does that mean April 1st or April 30th?
No later than the month of April.
Well, I would assume it would be one of the two meetings that we would have during April. But I guess I'm a little cautious in the relationship to the other things that we want to get done within this next few months and having this on the plate as well. And it is an important thing because this is going to be something that we're not going to want to come back to in another three months and say, well, we need to change it again. So this is the long-term kind of thing.
Corinne?
I'm going to push back a little on this because I think that there are a lot of big projects going on and the vacancy and needing to make sure that those projects happen has effectively and as efficiently as possible means that that department needs to be running as effectively and efficiently as possible. We aren't going to be the people doing the work. And I think if, by not approving this, we saddle village employees with a lot of extra work at a time when they really need to be able to help us focus on this other thing. So I think we have to do this in order for our staff to be able to do their jobs most effectively. And I would say this is the time to do this because we are in the middle of a lot of things and we need to make sure that department is running as smoothly as possible.
Looking for motion to approve or otherwise on this item. Lynn and Tim, further discussion. Hearing on, all those who favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who motion carries, thank you. I'd be rescheduled on the January 20th, 2025. Regular village board meeting due to Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. Staff recommendation, most of the reschedule to January 21st, 2025. Jason and Tim? I, there is a possibility, I wouldn't be here, but we certainly can carry on with six. I'm just making your word right now.
Amanda?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if we're, since we're moving a typically Monday night meeting to a Tuesday, that's something that the public has said before. The last time we did it, some people were like, wait, what, on a Tuesday, huh? I just want to make sure that we call it out in some way on the website and make it real obvious that we're moving this to a Tuesday because of the holiday. I don't know if there's a way to, you know, put a banner at the top or something to call attention to it so people are aware.
Anybody else? Corinne?
I just suggest that we make a big deal out of Martin Luther King Day and then say the meeting will be the next day so that we're actually amplifying the reason why it's not that day and calling attention to it.
Anybody else?
Okay, we have a motion by Jason, seconded by Tim. All those who very indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who motion carries, thank you. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants, this information and all interaction with the village board will be taken. A village administrator report, questions or comments, for Martin.
Tom?
I just would note on the second bulleted item, I think that it was a lift station meeting, not a life station.
Yeah. Correct.
It could have been a life station.
Could have been.
Anybody else?
Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. Announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village board members are going to provide brief statements. No discussion or action of the body shall occur under the department head's announcement. Village board members.
Tom?
Would like to just, I think everybody got a notice on it, but on December 7th, the Historical Society is having their annual Christmas program. They're going from 10:00 to 4:30. I went last year. It's interesting. There's a lot of history in Oregon, a lot of great things in that group. That's a lot of great work. And I think they do a especially nice program at Christmas time. It'd be a good one for the people that your schedules allow to make time to go to that.
But we concur. There's a lot more going on in that building than, you could spend hours on there. And it's really amazing, so. I would add that. Anybody else? Okay. Item 11B, future agenda items decided, excuse the village. Excuse me. Village board members have been placed up at the future agenda for discussion and or possible action. Item 12, closed session business. Eyes for discussion and or possible action. Out of Wisconsin State, it's 19.85, sub-1, so be deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting others' classified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Terms is limited to the village board and its discretion and necessary staff, other officers, and other individuals whose presence is necessary for the business at hand. A property and temporary construction and easement acquisition related to the Richard's Road Lift Station Construction Agreement. Looking for a motion to move it to closed session. Now, Amanda. And Lynn, roll call, please.
Mickey Daniel? Yes, session?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kurt Storker?
Yes.
Manki?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
We are in a closed session. Thank you.